All of those agencies working together to promote programs and activities that create strong, thriving children and families because every child deserves a hero. We and I invite all of you to join us at the annual Children's Day at the Plaza on Saturday, April 5th at the Mission Plaza in downtown San Luis Obispo. We hope that there will be, you will be there with us with the festivities at the kickoff at 10:00 a.m. on our day and with special recognition that we are going to be able to give to all of you as our local leaders and dignitaries. We also will want to take the time and we can give you a guided tour to provide you an opportunity to meet with local partner agencies and also share all the initiatives and positive impacts in our communities and resources that are available to families throughout this, our community and the county. Thank you for again, for this credible honor. I accept this proclamation not just for myself, but for every educator, parent, mentor, advocate who works tirelessly to uplift and support our children. Let's keep making a difference because when we invest in our children, we invest in a better tomorrow. And as you enjoy your plants as you grow, that is from the Planning Council. I hope you can reflect on all that you have done and continue to do and remember the children and all the difference you've already made in their lives. Thank you so much for this honor.
Thank you so much, as always, Jamie. All right, this takes us to City Manager Communications, Mr. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Matt Downing, your city manager. I have a few updates for you this evening. So for those out there who might be interested, the San Luis Obispo Council of Governments, also known as SLOCOG, is currently seeking an Arroyo Grande representative to serve on their Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee, or CTAC. You can find more information on both our, the city's website, our website, and SLOCOG's website. Those interested in service can submit their application to our city clerk. Over in the police department, we are in the final stages of upgrading the city's Emergency Operations Center by the end of this week. And this is an improvement for us for when disasters hit our community. We have a place to report, a lot of new functionality, so that's a great thing. And you will also see our new grant-funded DUI trailer out and about. We accepted delivery of that recently. And as a reminder, this trailer will be used for traffic safety enforcement, different operations like that in our city. Sticking with public safety, the Five Cities Fire Authority will begin annual weed abatement inspections the second week of April, so that's coming up quick. This program is crucial in reducing the threat of wildfire and creating defensible space in our community. So you can get more information if you'd like at fivecitysfireauthority.org/weedabatement. And then also in the fire realm, as the council knows, the state of California has issued fire hazard severity maps for all the local governments, including our own. These were released a couple of weeks ago and the public is encouraged to review them. And you can find out more information at the fivecitysfireauthority.org/firehazardseveritieszones. I do encourage everyone to go take a look at those, find out which zone you are in. This is a new thing this year that began rolling out at the beginning of the year. So do take a look at that and the council will be taking action on that at a future meeting. And then shifting a little bit, so even though spring has just started, even though you look outside and you go, oh, it's not spring right now, we are looking forward to the summer already. And the lineup for the summer concert series will be revealed this Thursday, March 27th. So stay tuned on our city's social media channels for your summer concert series lineup. And I have it on good information that there's some good acts again this year. So we're really looking forward to that. And then lastly, this is the final city council meeting before April 1st. So we wanted to remind the community that the Measure E24 sales tax increase takes effect April 1st, 2025. That is not an April Fool's joke. It is something that will be in place for the next 10 years. So this new sales tax will increase the rate in Arroyo Grande to 8.75. This is consistent with six of the other seven cities in our county and will generate approximately $6 million annually. So again, that begins on April the 1st, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any, any questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Downing. This takes us to City Council reports. This is where we report out on the other committees that we all sit on so that the rest of us and you can hear what we're up to when we're not on TV here at the council. And so I'm going first. The Audit Committee has not met. The CJPIA has not met. The Five Cities Fire Authority has not met since last time that I spoke, but it is meeting in an emergency meeting in, not emergency, a special meeting in April. And sorry. And thank you in advance for Mayor Protem, who is taking my place on that committee because I have a conflict on that special evening. For this sanitation district, I'm going to take these out of order. Sanitation district, I am so excited to say that that secondary clarifier is done, it is full, they are putting biology in there. It still has time, then it has to do all that startup and all of that. But I get more and more excited that this will actually be done and that we'll be able to, I keep asking, when do we get to take the big thing of champagne and whack it on the side of the clarifier? That's coming pretty soon. So that is a $30 million project that went exactly to plan until the second that it didn't. And that was due to no fault of anyone except an engineering problem from the get-go. So it had to be re-engineered and a piece of it. And that is what the delay has been. That delay is at no cost to the ratepayers. So very, that, that came under the heading of professional things. So very excited for that to come online. Hopefully that will be in my next report next month. Finally, the San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting. Oftentimes, my report from there is relatively benign, not benign, but a lot of times it's not necessarily germane to the city of Arroyo Grande. This time it definitely was. The first thing was the chief of fire from Atascadero did a full presentation on the new hazard maps that our city manager was just telling us about. And I do have early, hot off the press copies of these that I can give to Jessica to get out to everyone. You probably already have a digital copy of this anyway. It was the first that I had seen of it. I almost had a heart attack when I saw it. So there'll be more on this coming up as City Manager Downing said, so we'll be hearing it here. We'll talk about that in chambers. So there would be more to go with that. The, the big change on this is that we will have the opportunity to potentially smooth the lines of where these go because it, the state didn't give any consideration to how a color might have literally split a house in half or a neighborhood in half. And so we have the opportunity to smooth those lines. We can always make things more restrictive, we just can't make them less restrictive. So there may be an opportunity to look at making things a little bit more fair across neighborhoods, but we'll see how that goes. These were made on a 50-year timeline, so it's not really related to annual fire abatement or anything like that, so it's different than what we've seen before. It would be so much easier if I actually wrote in a font that I could read without my glasses. Thank you. That's pretty much it for the hazard maps, and we're going to again, deal with that here. I have a fair amount of notes about the presentation that the Paso Robles Fire Chief made about the new RFP that's going out for a new, possibly new ambulance service or modified ambulance service. And the bottom line of all my chicken scratch here and what I told City Manager Downing earlier today was that our council is pretty well aware of what's already going on. We've been briefed from the city manager, so there wasn't really anything new there for me. I don't know if it was for other mayors, but we have been well apprised of what's going on. So thank you to City Manager Downing. And the rest of it was a lot of discussion about possible state level legislation that may be coming down, but it's way too early to have those conversations right now. They haven't even been to their committees yet. So we'll have more conversations about those probably in summertime. So that's my report. I'll turn it over next to Mayor Protem Seacrest.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let's see. The Air Pollution Control District Board has not met since the last meeting, but we are having a special meeting on April 14th, I think it's a half a day, to assist with interviewing for the director position, which will be opening up because Gary Willey is retiring, which is too bad. He's, I've only been on it a few years, but he's amazing. So I, I know those will be big issues to fill. HSOC had their, let's see, I went to a new member orientation. They also had their annual workshop, which was half a day last week with an exercise, I'm going to put it this way, a well-meaning exercise to prioritize what services we would, we would rank, you know, as most important in the homeless services arena. I was thinking about it the other night and I, it kind of feels like if somebody said, okay, we got, we have 26 pilings on the Pismo Pier and we just need to know which seven you're going to go ahead and get rid of. Like, this is, it's difficult to ask service providers to cut when they're as tightly budgeted as they are, is the best way I can put it. And, and it's not a secret that there's probably a lot of federal cuts coming our way. So it's just, it's just a difficult situation. On the lighter side, with HSOC, I also joined a group of about 10 members that are new to HSOC and we got a tour by Jana Nichols of Five Cities Homeless Coalition, just toured all the different shelters and their non-congregant housing especially, which in case you're not aware, which I wasn't until a few months ago, non-congregant, you know, they have their own little spaces. So it's, it's pretty cool. I also, I don't talk about this very much, but I do actually attend for the South County Chamber of Commerce. I do attend their Government Affairs Committee meeting once a month. It's after their rise and shine. And the basic idea is government representatives appear and then just update whoever's there from the chambers board on what's going on in the city. So that's, it's a good chance to touch base and answer questions. And I think, pardon me one second. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Guthrie?
So I, let's start with Integrated Waste Management. I'll take them out of order here, too. We did just two things in that meeting. One, we did approve the brochure for the recruitment of our new director. So that has gone out. I think we're probably halfway through the period. It's going to be relatively short, 30-day. We're planning on doing the interviews in, in mid-May. Reach did not meet. Oh yeah, also at Integrated Waste Management, we did another one of those tag grants. So this time for trash containers in Cayucus.
What kind?
Technical assistance grant. I don't know what's technical about it. These were $900, these were tran, trans, trash cans that cost $900 a pair. So, yeah. That's what they cost. I think we should have found somebody who would, they're really, to me, just big plastic. They're very close to the trash cans we have at home, but you know, they're bigger and a little bit nicer. Crazy expensive. So 3C is usually pretty complicated. It is a very complicated business, but it's, the good news, they did pass all of their financial reviews. Almost a half a billion dollar business now. But the bad news is that there is going to be another small rate increase, about 3.5% here that they're going to have to do this year due to some regulatory changes. I think, I think it'd be fair to say that some of the sort of advantages that the community energy groups had in the beginning are starting to get reeled back in by the, what they call the IOUs. At any rate, PG&E and Southern, Southern Cal Gas, I always forget. IOU sticks in my mind as an IOU.
You mean an MOU?
No, it's, it's existing, no, it's called IOUs. It's definitely IOUs, but it means something else, which I forgot now. At any rate, but the, I think the, sort of the worst part of that news is we're now only going to, 3C will only be about 1% for residents, will only be about 1% cheaper than PG&E. So the, some of the, the cost advantages, as I say, I think it was about 5.5% last year. So for commercial, it'll still be about the same at about 3, 3.5% less expenses than PG&E. I think, I should know this number, but, but a significant, a much larger portion of energy is used by commercial and agriculture than by residents. So, so that's the news from there. And Reach did not meet. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Marvelia?
I feel like the slacker right now. Neither of the boards that I sit on met this past month, but we will have the not emergency special meeting in April of the Five Cities Fire Authority.
Sorry, I didn't want to scare, I didn't mean to scare the bejesus out of everybody. All right, and Councilmember Lowe is not here. So that takes us straight to item eight. This is community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. As you come forward, please keep your comments to one minute or less and address the council as one body. So if you would like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda, now's your chance. Come on forward.
Alexandria Davis, local resident. I would like to suggest that we look into whether or not we could start switching to red lighting for pedestrian and street lighting. It's supposed to be easier on nocturnal wildlife. And I've heard that it actually means that once you're to the point where you're putting out red lights instead of white light, you can get a really nice view of the sky.
Would anyone else like to come forward on items not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing no one else, we'll check in online.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right, so let's bring this back to staff. And that's interesting that Alexandria brings that up. I see the wheels turning in Mr. Downing's head right now, but let me, let me let you look at that for just a moment, whatever you're looking at. When I was back in DC in January, at the Smithsonian, they had a whole, not presentation, thank you, exhibit on night sky ordinances in small cities. And I took pictures of it and then forgot all about it till just this moment. So I had meant to talk to you about a similar topic. It is a growing issue worldwide, actually. So what are your thoughts initially? And, well, I'll let you talk.
I always like new ideas. I, my, the, the look on my face was more trying to find a good example online as to what that looks like. So happy to look into it and see what that means, what the trade-offs are and where they, if we want to look into that, where it might be most appropriate. I'll take whatever information you have from DC.
I will give that to you in the next time we meet and then perhaps we can both be CC'd on a response. Sounds great. All right. Then we will move on from item eight to our consent agenda. These are collectively items 9A through 9G. So first I will check in with the council and see if there's anything that anyone would like to ask questions on or pull for separate consideration.
No, thank you.
All right. And not for me either. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to comment on any of the items that begin with the number nine? And seeing no one, we'll see if anyone's joined us online.
There are no members of the public online.
All right, so I'll close public comment, bring this back to the council for discussion, possible action.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda, agenda 9A through 9G.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, may we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russen? Yes. All right, and so we have no items 10 tonight. Item 11 is update to user fees related to solar permits, transportation permits, and the Consumer Price Index as set forth in the comprehensive fee schedule. I see Mr. Pedrati has taken his perch. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. This is an update to the user fees related to solar permits, transportation permits, and the Consumer Price Index. So there are three parts to this item. One is the Consumer Price Index, one is the transportation permit fee, and the third is the solar permit fee. The Consumer Price Index in the user fee update approved in January 2024, the resolution dictated that fees shall be adjusted annually in accordance with the CPI for the Los Angeles region, and that was 3.3% in January of 2025. The current transportation fee for overweight or oversized vehicles needs to also come in alignment with the California Vehicle Code, which states the fee shall not exceed the fee developed by the Department of Transportation. And the solar permit fee, the current fees associated with solar permits need to come in alignment with the government code, which sets a limit on the assessed fee. So in summary, the comprehensive fee schedule is proposed to be updated to include the CPI increase, the proper transportation permit fee, and the proper solar permit fees. And the alternatives are to adopt the resolution, updating user fees, modify and adopt the resolution, and provide other direction to staff.
All right, let's see if we have any questions, any questions? I just have a super quick one that I didn't think of until just now. On the CPI thing, can we make that so that just automatically happens or does that have to be in action annually of the city council?
I believe it has to be in action annually by the city council. But Nicole Valentine is here if you have any specific questions about that.
Good evening, council. The way that the original fee study was updated, that we did include it that annual, or every time the CPI adjustment is, it will be brought forth before your council. In the future, with the study, we could write the resolution differently and then just increase it automatically.
Seems like maybe we should.
Because it seems redundant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so we will open up public comment on item 11A. Does anyone have comment to make on item 11A? And seeing no one, we'll see if someone's joined us online for comment.
There are no members of the public online and Zoom is working, just so you know.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, then we'll close public comment on item 11A and bring this back to the council. Does anyone have comments or actions to take? Madam Marvelia, I see you reaching.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to comment that I think it's funny that we still have a palm reading fee on there, but, which was super interesting to me, just on a, I don't know, human level, I thought it was interesting. But I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution updating user fees related to solar permits, transportation permits, and the Consumer Price Index as set forth in the comprehensive fee schedule, including as Exhibit A. And determine that the update to user fees related to all of those above is not a project subject to CEQA.
Second.
Hello? All right, we got it. All right, good. Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russen?
Yes. And Mr. Downing, is that sufficient direction from the council about next time we do fee, fee schedule update?
We will definitely look at that. I made a note of it and we'll bring it back. You'll take, the council will take formal action on a future date.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Item 11B is amendments to Title VI Animals of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code. They are not the animals of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code, but then I am awaiting Chief Martinez. Hi, Chief.
Having me this evening. So I just want to read from our staff report because I think it's, it's pretty concise in terms of summarizing what we're bringing forward this evening for our first reading of the amending Title VI Animal Ordinance for the city. In 2023, city staff worked with staff from other cities within San Luis Obispo County and county staff to review and develop consistent city ordinances and county regulations regarding animals. As a result of this work, uniformed San Luis Obispo County Code Title IX regulations were developed to allow consistent enforcement across the county and its cities. The county has asked each contract city to adopt their Title IX regulations by reference into their municipal code to streamline and simplify the enforcement of animal control throughout the county. This is the work that we have been doing for probably about two months now, working with animal control, county animal control, to align many of those codes. And I brought with me tonight Commander Ayala, who is the author of this staff report, to answer any questions, as well as Eric Anderson from County Animal Control, to be able to answer questions as well.
All right, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions. Any questions on this side, on this side? All right, thank you, Chief. We will go ahead at this time then and open up public comment on item 11B. Would anyone like to talk about item 11B? This is the Animals of Arroyo Grande Municipal Code. All right, and seeing no one, we'll check in online.
There are no members of the public online.
All right, let's bring this back to the council and have discussion or possible action. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I can, okay, I can make a motion that we introduce an ordinance amending Title VI, quote unquote, animals of the municipal code to adopt and incorporate by reference San Luis Obispo County Code Title IX, animals, and to retain certain city requirements regarding animals. And also find that the ordinance is exempt from California Environmental Quality Control CEQA because it will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russen?
Yes. This takes us to item 11C. This is Tourism Business Improvement District or T-Bid Annual Report and Intent to Levy Annual Assessment. And I see Ms. Bulkin coming out, but before we do that, I will declare that as usual on this item, because I have a short-term rental, this applies directly to me financially, so I will be stepping down with a conflict of interest. So I will turn it over to our Mayor Protem to administer the rest of the meeting. And should you do anything interesting on council communications, I'm sure the city manager will let me know. So with that, would you please give me just a moment to leave the room?
Okay. Let's proceed to 11C. And I think there's a presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers.
My name is Sheridan Bulkin. I'm your Director of Recreation Services, and I'm here tonight to present a resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments within the Arroyo Grande Tourism Business Improvement District area for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Established in 2013, the AGT bid serves to promote tourism and drive overnight visitation. The city's T-Bid has a council-appointed advisory board who provide guidance on the administration and the use of the 2% assessment levied on lodging businesses following directives for annual reporting and spending categories from the city's municipal code and the T-Bid's established bylaws. This year's anticipated revenues from the T-Bid assessment are just over $318,000, with expenses estimated at approximately $461,000 and an anticipated fund balance of about $295,000. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Richardson Rieger with Commune Communication.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Will you be bringing up the, okay. Thank you for having me here this evening. Happy, oh, I get the clicker. Awesome. Really excited to share progress that we've made so far with driving tourists and business and overnight stays. This is, I've heard that I should focus on results because there were more questions about the, the results we're delivering as opposed to the process of how we got there. So I will advance quickly through some of the front end of this presentation. It roughly mirrors what you've seen in the annual report document. So if there are additional questions at the end about some of that content, feel free to, to ask. But we wanted to really share, because I know there's a lot of questions about the numbers, we're looking at new types of numbers that you probably haven't seen before. So we want to clarify how we're using that data and how we're using it to optimize our campaigns and drive increased visitation over time. So that's all the things that are in the annual report. We won't go through all those things today. Defining our objectives, how do we do that, all of this stuff. We, we slightly updated the strategic plan, which you can dive into the details within the document. It's basically saying, which is kind of a common theme through the entire presentation, is reorienting ourselves and prioritizing driving overnight stays and bringing people from outside the community in. from outside the community in. So we, you may have noticed there's maybe less activity in some of our social media and our owned channels like newsletters and blogs and those types of things. That's really because we're trying to spend and invest as much money and time as possible in bringing people from outside of our area to town for overnight stays and visits. So that's really where we're putting the bulk of our energy. Not that we've ignored those channels, but those are things that maybe are taking a step back as we place more money into things like paid media that can drive people in. So there's a whole list of things that we've done over the course, and this just explains sort of the process that we've gone through, which is not so much in the annual report, but talks about how we got to where we are today and all the steps that we, we took to basically land on a strategy and an optimization approach. So we could dig into that if there are some additional questions. This kind of emphasizes where we are in terms of our media mix. So moving from maybe a little bit more investment in owned channels to more paid channels, that's reflective of that theme of trying to really focus on bringing visitation in from our target growth markets. So I will go quickly into results. So this gets into a little bit more detail about how we're looking at these numbers and what we're using this data for. This is a fun little anecdote. I know one of the issues in the past was that maybe we didn't really understand, we saw, we had a lot of numbers about how people were engaging with our digital media, but not so much about how it was actually driving visitation to our hotels and to the village at large. But this is a longstanding problem, so you can feel comfortable that you're not alone. Our industry is getting better at this and with all the data that's available, getting better attribution and even driving, understanding visitation from things like offline media as well. So we want to move from a mindset of, yes, we understand it's important, but we're not really sure which tactics are most effective and how that's actually driving results, to clearly understanding the role marketing plays in driving incremental visitation. And for us, as the managers of that media buy, which tactics are most effective and how can we continually put more of our investment into things that are working at driving visitation, not just engagement? This was helpful, I think, in communicating with the board of understanding how we're using different types of data to understand performance. So the green one is sort of the new data that we're going to be looking at. So obviously, we have data from the city and from other sources that talk about occupancy and TOT revenue and how that's growing over time. We have the traditional sort of digital media metrics of reach and engagement and how people are interacting with our advertising. We have website traffic, so we, you know, that's largely the same as what you've seen in the past. What's new is what we call local, location visitation reporting, which allows us to understand how many people who are exposed to our marketing actually visited the city or, or specific hotel locations. How many of those were unique visits? So it's total visits plus unique visits, which then allows us to analyze cost per exposed visit or cost per exposed unique visitors. So I know those were some new terms that were in the annual report and there were some questions around, and happy to field additional clarification about those at the end of the remarks. But that's allowing us to answer questions like, what is marketing's incremental contribution to visitation to Arroyo Grande? Where are people going? Which hotels are they going to? Are they visiting the village? And, you know, just sort of understanding how that traffic is moving around. Where are people coming from? So better understanding what sources are driving people in and which tact, which marketing tactics, to the point I was making before, are most effective so that we can continually invest more in those things that are, that are really working the hardest for us. So we have the TOT revenue, which is trending roughly as it did last year. So we feel like we're on target to at least match or exceed, especially with the optimizations that we've been making. These are some of the digital engagement metrics, which are important, but maybe this is what gets more interesting is the location visitation data. So specifically, the media that we ran against, that can be tracked against location visitation, delivered 1.49 million impressions. That resulted in 530 total exposed visits, so that's people who saw the advertising, that's total number of visits of people who saw the advertising. 199 is total exposed unique visitors, so that's 199 individual human beings who saw our advertising and ended up in the village or, or hotel locations. So that allows us to calculate this cost per unique visitor and cost per exposed visit, which those become the key numbers for us to optimize against over time. So we're proving that we're going to deliver a positive return on investment, on the investment that the city is making in tourism. This is a traditional marketing funnel, you know, helps us understand that, you know, we delivered 2 million impressions, that's generating broader awareness, which is also important, delivering around 22,000 clicks to our digital platforms. That resulted in 79 hotel page visits on the website and 78 book now clicks, so that's what's, how we're calculating this soft conversion. It shows that there's intent, that we don't know, once they go over to the partner's site, if they booked or not, but it allows us to say a specific media tactic is effective at driving people to at least be interested via visitorarroyo.com. And as we look at the website user experience, we want to optimize against that conversion rate to make sure we're getting people from a site visit to one of those soft intent conversions as quickly and easily as possible. So these all become key metrics for us to look at and benchmark against over time. So that's 530 total exposed visits, that's $40 per exposed visit. So that $40 is, is another key number that we're going to be looking at every time we report out to say, how are we improving against that number? This gives a little bit of a breakdown of where people are going. So another key metric for us is increasing the number of total visits to hotels relative to total visits, because we want to make sure we're converting people who come to the village to, you know, having an overnight stay. And that's not just paid media, that's stuff we want to do in the village that encourages people to stay once they've visited and tried it for the first time, basically, to then come back or decide to stay that night. So this also breaks down that same data by soft conversions on the website as well, so you can kind of see how things lay out. It generally maps to the, the capacity of those hotels. So Casa Grande has more rooms, so they tend to get more. But it allows us to also report back to the individual hotels, like who's getting the most traffic and getting the most benefit from the T-Bid. We're also looking, we had a strategy that was basically saying we have more headroom in our larger growth coastal markets like San Francisco Bay Area and Southern California. So we, we are prioritizing a little bit investment in those versus maybe our visitors from the valley where we have a pretty good per capita visitation rate already. We still need to nurture those, but we, we do want to start to grow against those larger markets and build awareness in those spaces. So we're tracking on a percentage basis and a per capita basis how much we're getting from what we call growth markets versus nurture markets, and we still feel like there's, there's room to grow there. This is a breakdown of our paid media tactics, so it allows us to look at total exposed visits per 1,000 impressions, which indicates that CTV and OTT are video placements, which tend to be more expensive, but they are most effective at driving visitation. So this is where, if you were just looking at digital performance data, you might say, well, CTV, it's kind of expensive, the cost per click is very high, but when we look at this data, we clearly see that it's most effective at driving people to visit Arroyo Grande. So this is where this data becomes really valuable to us that we didn't have before. And this just shows the, the accumulation of that advertising and how it starts to accumulate over time, and our visitation per week starts to improve on a positive trend line based on the advertising that we've been running. People tend to plan out 30 days ahead, so once we started all of this tracking in November, it took a little bit of time for it to build up, but we're starting to see that positive momentum now. And you can see the same thing of exposed visits and exposed visitors. The cost per visit, I know it looked kind of large before when we looked at the other slide, but now we're looking at $20 and in that range. So that starts to be a pretty good return on investment when you think about their spending in the village and their, and even a single overnight stay more than pays for This is web traffic, so a lot of our traffic comes through paid search and advertising, organic search and organic social, and then some direct traffic, but it does demonstrate that the investments that we're making in paid search and paid advertising is really helping drive visits to the website. We won't get too much into the weeds here around insights and actions, but it's just to demonstrate that when we look at this data, we're taking specific actions based on it, whether that's increasing our investment in CTV or OTT, optimizing the web experience to try to drive that soft conversion rate, even looking at new channels, things like we're exploring billboards out of home to actually drive, you know, more awareness for people who are driving down the 101. So this data really does help us make smarter decisions about how we're investing the T-Bid funds. These are the benchmarks I was talking about, so the great thing about having sort of that sample first couple of months of activity was it allows us, allowed us to set these benchmarks of performance. So the first time we reported out, the cost per exposed unique visitor was $125. That went down to $105. Same with cost per exposed visit was 67 down to $40. So we're seeing great improvement over time and we'll continue to map against these benchmarks and report out about how we're improving. And the media update in terms of out of home, out of home is very competitive on the 101. There's not a lot of inventory. We looked for months to try to find a billboard that would fit our needs and there wasn't many. And luckily, a couple of boards came available just north of Paso Robles. It's a little further than we would like, but it does allow us to run a test, which we think is really valuable because we are able to apply that location visitation reporting to the billboards. We basically pixel these billboards, there are coordinates on the map, and those people who are exposed to the billboards, we then expose them to our digital campaign and then can see if that's more or less effective than our other media tactics. So we're going to run that test over the next few months, and that will then influence sort of our budgeting and our media mix proposal for the next fiscal year. And I think that's, that describes that. And did I hit 10 minutes? Am I under? So hopefully that clarifies a little how those numbers work and sort of how we're looking at data and how we're using it to optimize the campaign.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember?
So I was in the hotel business, it's been 10 years, so a lot of this is new stuff to me. So I'm, I'm still, I used to know what is, what I thought a unique, either what we would call a unique visit website, that's it, in your case, you're saying it's exposed. So I understand they're, they're an individual. That's 199, so who were the other 300 and something exposed visits? Were they these people seeing multiple times?
They could be coming multiple times, yeah.
Could they be lots? Could they be, so, I mean, that's a lot, you know, that's, that's more than...
Well, if they are in the village, they're moving around, they stay for two nights, you know, those are all visits. It's based on their...
So they might show, their cellphone might show up more than one time?
Right.
And I'm thinking of websites, they would go to the website more than once, but in this case, they turn their phone off and turn it back on, they're another exposed visitor.
Yeah, similar to like an impression on a website where like, you don't know if that's a unique person or if that's the same person coming back to the website, so it, it could be duplicates of the same people.
In fact, it's probably duplicates.
It is, yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's, those are both three. Okay, so when, when they hit the book now button, do, since these, since the ones that have gotten the visits are flag properties, do you know, does it go to their flag reservation service or to their own page? Or do they have their own page?
I believe they have their own booking experience on their own site, so it'd go directly to them.
So, so when, when you click on that, you actually see the Aquarian, not the Best Western? You're, you're on the Best Western site, I assume, but you're, I don't know why I assume that, but you're on the Best Western site?
It, it varies by partner. You know, they have their own booking user flow depending on the partner.
Correct, so it's the information that they give us to where they want the visitor to land. So if they're going from our website to the hotel, then they're giving us that site that they want us to direct the traffic to.
Okay, so do you know of the flag properties? For instance, does the Aquarian have their own page and their own booking capability from that page? As an example, it's, it's a Best Western.
I believe that they do, but I'll verify that.
Okay, and same thing Casa Grande? Haven't been gone so long as to know that Hampton probably insists on going through Hampton, but...
Because I know that they do offer and partner with Expedia and other booking agents, so I'll verify which they're using.
Yeah.
I'll just, their, their flag won't want to go into Expedia, but, okay.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to third-party booking sites.
Okay. Now I have some question about the billboard too, but I'll, I'll leave that to the T-Bid to go through those. Those are my questions.
Those were the best billboards we could get. Oh, I'll just say that.
It isn't, it isn't the quality of the billboards.
Okay. Well, we know that one of the things, our strategy was how do we build broader awareness against, you know, particularly people, we would love to have one coming from the South too, but that's what was available. But we do feel like it's, it's a viable, useful test for us because it's something that it would, it would be an obvious thing, it's like, well, why don't we have one? In the past, it was because it wasn't trackable. And now we can say, well, it is trackable, and if it works, great, we'll keep them up. If it doesn't work, we won't invest there anymore.
Okay, so, so let me go to my question then. So when you're looking at a billboard, you're not looking at what I would call old-school billboard, where you see the billboard, you stay at the hotel that night. You are looking at a billboard, somebody sees this, then you send the, you target them for advertising.
Right. We, we identify them as someone exposed and then we can run advertising against them, yeah.
So you can literally identify this individual person, and if they're on the internet, you're going to put your ad in front of them?
Right. Yeah. At the same time, we do see it as a long game. We need to build broader word of mouth and awareness about HE because we know that it has maybe a lower awareness profile than other cities in Slow County, particularly among maybe people in the Bay Area or from Los Angeles. So we think that's a problem we can help solve with something like a broad-reach medium like that. But time will tell, you know, and the data will tell us.
Yeah, I'll just say even 10 years ago, we were trying to crack the Bay Area in LA and it's, you know, it's a big area, but thanks.
Yeah, I don't think we'll get to the same per capita visitation that we do from Bakersfield, of course, but there is headroom there, so, not that, you know...
I just remember the cost in Bakersfield in Fresno were a lot less.
Yeah. But we, yeah, we get a decent amount of, and this, and that billboard is a way for us to reach those people without having to advertise heavily in San Francisco, but we're still, we're getting them because they might be visiting the area anyway, might be familiar with Slow County, but maybe haven't heard of HE.
I'm just going to give Councilperson Maravilla a chance to ask some questions because we're still in questions, I think, aren't we? Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought we kind of digressed into comments there.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I, I really love the new priorities and the new measurements and metrics. I think it's a great way to start measuring to actual, like, what this, what our ROI is on what we're spending. I had a question about the budget, actually, so Sheridan, I don't know if that would be for you, but are expenses are budgeted over income? Was that on purpose for this year? I'm, I'm new on the council, so maybe I missed out on that part, but...
That was intentional because there is a fund balance that we are trying to drive down.
That's what I figured, but I figured I would ask just in case. I was like, wait, we budgeted way over, so there had to have been a reason for it, so thank you for that.
Thank you, of course.
In terms of the, I'm just thinking in terms of like the attraction for San Francisco and Los Angeles as well, did we run A/B testing on any of the creative to see what might be more attractive to those particular audiences?
We did. It's a little complicated because we have a new campaign that we're also rolling out right now, but with the prior assets, we did an adaptation, and we did run a test to see how it performed against different types of creative, against also older and younger audiences and... against different types of creative, against also older and younger audiences and out sort of more from the valley versus in larger cities. And it kind of played out like we thought it would, right? It was like, when we were a little more intriguing, it worked better for those urban audiences and with maybe different types of representation in the creative itself, where when we used maybe older couples sipping wine with a very direct message, that worked against the audience that you would expect.
Interesting.
So we've, the creative that we're sort of moving forward with is a little more thought-provoking and a little more trying to get people to experience AG for themselves and inspire them to want to find out more versus explaining to them what we are.
Okay.
A lot of our insight behind the creative was that, you know, we offer a lot of the same things that other cities in Slow do as well. So for us to just say the same things that we have those two wasn't differentiating enough, that we wanted to be creative and try to invite people to experience the unique charm of AG versus just telling them who we are and what things that you can do here. Not that that's not part of the messaging, but to take a kind of a different creative tack to get there.
I'm just interested to see where, what was, where it came from, and, you know, that audience is so different than probably Bakersfield or Fresno. So is different creative running in different, those two places, or is it the same?
Not at the moment. But we did heavy up a little bit more into the larger markets. Part of the strategy is also to maybe bring in slightly younger people who might have more active influence in social media, because that's a big point at which people find inspiration for travel these days. And so we want to build word of mouth through the people who visit here. So we want to get people who are really active and social and will post about AG.
Okay. And then the only other real question that I had about it was, I think on, I think on one of the slides, it even, it said that the most effective tactic at driving visitation right now was the CTV OTT.
Yeah.
But we aren't doing any Q3? Is it cost-wise or...?
No, we have CTV OTT.
Maybe I read it wrong, because I read it as we were, I didn't read it that we were doing that in there, but that's good to know that...
We do hope in the new fiscal to create a new asset for CTV OTT that is within the new campaign.
Should I ask what's running currently?
We basically have an adaptation of the prior, the Time Well Spent campaign, because we have a new sort of static print and digital campaign, but haven't had the budget yet to do the production for a brand-new video spot. So we'll get there in the new fiscal.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you, and I don't have any questions, but thank you. And then we're going to open up to the audience for questions? Okay, comments? Sorry, comments? Not quite.
City Manager Downing was saying that was a good time for a public comment. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, any public comment? And seeing none? Oh, Alexandra?
My comment is just that I noticed that pre-roll video has a very low impact, and I do kind of understand that, because when I'm watching something, usually I'm trying not to pay attention to advertisements that come before my video, rather than actually paying attention to the advertisements.
Okay, thank you.
And representing our industry, I take no offense at that.
Will you check online?
And we're still in public comment period, so we'll just finish that real quick. There's nobody on Zoom right now.
Thank you. Then moving on to council comments. Councilmember Marvelia? Councilmember Guthrie?
Well, I guess I'll just start with a question for Stafford, and this relates to sort of the mechanics of tonight, because we're only three council members tonight. Just to confirm that it's a unanimous vote of the council to pass this tonight?
That's correct, Councilmember Guthrie. So because the council's asked to approve a resolution under the government code, that has to be affirmative, three votes in order to pass.
So any one no vote would be a no. And since this comes back in 30 days after the, I think it's 30 days, after the protests, I'll call the protest period, I'm sure it has a better name than that, is that, that is a separate vote?
That's correct. So part of the recommendation in approving the resolution of intent would be to set that public hearing for the May 13 meeting, at which time our clerk would take into account any protests, and there would be another vote at that time associated with the assessment.
And at that time, it would, could be voted up or down again.
That's correct.
Whereas if tonight, we voted on, one no vote would end the whole thing right now. There wouldn't be a second vote.
Correct, with the current council members present this evening for tonight's agenda is item.
All right, I just want that clarification in there. I don't have more questions, these are all comments. So I do, I have a lot of history with this. Back, oh gosh, 12, 15 years ago, ever when we started this, originally, we, after we did the county one, we reached out to the hotels to see if they would be interested in doing a local one. I think it was the Casa Grande management said not, and said no, and at that time, I think they were literally half of the, half of the T-Bid, or half of the revenue. So there was a change in management there, and I approached the new management and said, why wouldn't you guys do this? And they gave me some reason. I will say the management before said, basically said, he would rather see us do a TOT than do a T-Bid, that it would be more effective. The second guy who was in charge, if you remember the, well, maybe you don't, the Slow County had, they had a general fund, but they also had a whole bunch of little funds that each of the communities got. And at that time, those little communities were having trouble spending that money, because they couldn't find anything that fit their budget that actually seemed like it would accomplish anything. And that was his concern, was that it wasn't going to be enough money to do anything, but in particular, that the hotels would not have enough time to participate, that these were not hotels like I was used to running, where a general manager has a lot of free time, where your general manager's probably working shifts. But he said he, he said they would go forward, and he put together the rest of the hotels, frankly, on that, and that's why we have this T-Bid today. So for me, that was, those were concerns right from the beginning, was whether the hotels were going to be able to participate, and actually frankly, whether, whether this was enough money to be effective. I had to step away, because I obviously had a conflict, so I wasn't paying that much attention to what was actually going on at the T-Bid. But after I retired, I was the liaison, and I will say, at that point, it just felt like, even though we did have a couple of hotels at that time participating, there was actually no, no real participation. Had a very difficult time with getting quarums. Nobody even looked at the financials. There were a couple of major errors when I looked at the financials, so that just heightened my interest. Shortly after that, I was off council, and I did pass on that this is something I thought needed a hard look. And I do think that hard look happened. But I still have the same concerns today, that in fact, independent, I actually think this is a pretty cool campaign. I mean, I don't do marketing, I don't do colors, I don't do marketing, I just stay out of that. But I do think this is a pretty cool campaign, but I just, I just can't see where, in the long run, it's going to be effective. We're looking at, what, 13 confirmed, I should remember, 13 confirmed sales and 29 click-throughs for, I think we've already spent $260,000 or something. And when you look at just the administrative costs of this, between what the city costs and what, you know, just preparing the materials and doing those kinds of things, it's probably a third of the money just goes to, goes to admin. So as I said last time, I wanted to see results. We got results. They don't look, parts of that looks great, but parts of, the bottom line doesn't look that great. I'm disappointed that the hotels are not responding at all, but I do recognize, in fact, I went on a little rant a long time ago about this, how this, how easy this money is for a hotel. It looks like a tax, you know, how can they, how can you, almost how can you not do this? Which was actually my point to the management at that time. So when we passed this, I, there was some concern that there was no metric for measuring. And I said, you don't have to really worry about that, because the hotels will take care of it. They don't, they don't want to do this if, in fact, it's not working. Well, it's not working, and they're not doing anything. So I feel like that we have a fiduciary responsibility to even, to, if it's not working, then we need to end it, if the hotels won't. And that's my position tonight. I think it's time to go ahead, and as I realize we're in mid-contract, we do have a year's worth of money to work through this. But given the situation we have here tonight, if in fact, there's no second vote to do that, I will vote with the majority, because I do not want to see a single person TKO this. That way, it can come back, hopefully we have at least four, I guess we will have at best four, and we can have a, what do you call, and if that continues to be the deal, then at least I'll have the opportunity to vote my conscience. But tonight, if neither of you are interested in that, in my position, then I will vote with the majority in order to continue this. So those are my comments.
Thank you. I think it's, I don't share exactly the same opinion as you, but I understand what you're saying, and I would feel more comfortable having more people on the council for the final vote, and also, the contract does go until the end of the fiscal year, correct? So...
Actually, it goes beyond our fiscal year into October of next year, right? It's a full year?
The marketing firm contract goes through June 30th of this year.
October, oh, okay. I stand corrected.
Okay, thank you. So then, do we have a motion at this point?
I don't, oh, sorry.
It's okay. I think it's interesting what you're saying. I would like more time to think about it and look at it from that point of view, knowing that, you know, we'll have May to make a kind of final decision on this type of thing. So for me, I would like to receive and approve the report tonight and have it go through until that point in time. But I find what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, and I'd like to study it a little bit more. So I think I'll make a motion then. I won't make you make the motion. I'm going to, I would, I will motion to receive and approve the annual report, adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments within the Arroyo Grande Tourism Business Improvement District area for fiscal year 2526, setting the public hearing date for May 13, 2025, and find that this is not subject to CEQA.
Sorry, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Marvelia?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Electively, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Seacrest?
Just, sorry. Councilmember Marvelia?
I don't think I have anything to communicate. Oh, on Friday, myself and yourself and Councilmember Lowe attended a luncheon with Arroyo Grande Hospital and learned more about just the system and what it's doing for the community.
And City Manager Downing was there too.
City Manager Downing, I'm sorry to forget you, Matt.
And Councilmember Guthrie?
Yeah, I don't have any communications.
I don't have any considering, that's all I had, so. Then are we adjourned? Okay, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.